Good evening. There is a lot of energy in the room and that's how we like it. Not all of our council meetings have this much energy. So, we're grateful that you all are here today. And we're really grateful for our students that are here. We're going to do something just a little bit different to start. We are really privileged to have our adaptive recreation team here. We're going to let them go first. We have a quick video that we want to show and then we'll invite them up to perform for all of us. And then we will continue on with our student citizen of the month. We'll do quick introductions. I am Mayor Jen Daniels. We have our vice mayor, Bridgette Peterson. Councilmember Victor Peterson, who also happens to be turning 40 today. So, 40th birthday. Calling you out. Yeah. All right. We're going to leave the cartwheels to our cheer team. Victor. There's an inside joke to Victor's cartwheels. We'll tell you guys about that later. Councilmember Eddie Cook. Councilmember Scott Anderson. Councilmember Jared Taylor. And councilmember Jordan Ray. So, we have the whole crew here today. All right. Lauren, we'll have you queue up that video. Thanks.
I'm Jen Myers and I'm the head coach of the Gilbert Wildcats Adaptive Rec Cheer Program. Put your hands on those hips. Smiles on those lips. Ready? One, two. We're inclusive. We have students and athletes that range from age 12 up to almost 70. In, four, five, higher.
I'm Joe and I'm on the Wildcats team. I was never able to do sports when I was a kid because I have some disabilities. But they got me at 63 cheering and dancing around and having a ball. Shake it Wildcats, shake it.
It's geared towards competing at the Special Olympics. And this year, we got gold in both area and state. When they get up there and you know how much work they've put into it and they're at the competition and you hear the audience cheer back for them and they just get this look on their face of wow, this is so cool. I mean, that's what every coach wants. And then where do we start? A lot of people see adaptive recreation or special needs as just that. They're special needs. They have disabilities. But that's one thing that we don't look at. We don't look at the disabilities. We look at the abilities. Do you see another character? They have this immense desire to learn and want to do something and be a part of something. What else is sharp? Arms.
We all love dancing. I like hanging with my friends. I like hanging with my coach.
I love all the practices and stuff like that. Coach Jennifer is amazing and they care about us so much.
They come in and they can't wait to get to work. They come in and they can't wait to take the journey together. And I think that's what they teach me is just enjoying the journey together. Ready? One, two. The Wildcats are ready to soar to the sky. Preparing for the fire. We set our eyes to the sunrise shine. Dancing and dancing to the stars. They're running, getting down, back. Zero to zero, but we're beating out. So, we are best, first to the test. Gilbert's riding in no time. So, Wildcats friends in the stands. On the beach and on the beach. Moving, feeling, now, shaking all around. We love our Gilbert Cats.
We are so proud of our gold medal Wildcats cheer team. Let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you so much for being here tonight. And thank you to your coach. You always want one picture, right? We want to get a big picture together. Let's do that. Let's take a one big picture. Council, come on in. As you can see, this is just one of many programs that our Gilbert Parks and Rec team puts on. This is one of my favorites. They come to us every year and do that. And so, I'm so grateful that you guys were all here to witness that today. We'll continue on with our student citizen of the month program. And we will just click to the next slide. We, as a council, also follow the pillars of character that many of you follow in your schools. And this month's highlighted pillar is caring, something that we hold dear as members of your town council, but also as just members of your community. I got it. We have two sponsors that help us with this program every single month. That is Sal's Gilbert Pizza, right across the street here from Town Hall. Great community partners. And also Nitro Live. And I think we have some representatives from Nitro Live today. Yes, where's the Vander Mollens? Awesome. Thank you so much. Those are the owners of Nitro Live and huge supporters to our community. We'll go to the next slide. We love our teachers. We are proud of our Gilbert education system. We have three districts that cover our community and 35 charter schools in addition to private schools. All of them are welcome to submit for student citizen of the month. But at this time, we really want to honor the teachers, administrators, and staff that are in the room. If you are part of that group, will you please stand? And wave back there. That's right. This is an incredibly busy time of year for everybody, right? All of families, all the teachers. But this is probably the other duties as assigned for your teachers. And the fact that they're here tonight tells a great deal about their desire to serve your children and mine. We do have, and I need help. Will you be my helper? Come on up. It's really easy, I promise. I won't ask you to do any cheers unless you're a cheerleader. Are you a cheerleader?
No.
No, okay, good. So, no cheers for you. But we have the names of all of the teachers who submitted a child tonight for our student citizen of the month in this bucket. Will you draw a name out for me? Thanks for your help. Tell us your name.
Skylar.
Hi, Skylar. Skylar picked Mr. Nelson from Cooley Middle Schools. Is Mr. Nelson here tonight? If he's not here, we'll make sure he gets it. But we have a $25 gift card to Sal's Gilbert Pizza for Mr. Nelson. Thank you so much. Thanks for your help. We'll just, yep, got it. Okay, one more slide. We do this in three groups. We're really efficient and pretty organized when we do this. We love to honor our students. And I'd like to invite the Vander Mollens down to take a picture with Group One after we honor the first group. So, first group is all of our elementary school kids from elementary schools that start from A and go to J. So, Ashland Ranch Elementary, all the way down actually to Islands Elementary. If you are one of our student citizens of the month from that, those schools, come on down and Councilmember Ray will show you where to stand. Awesome. Come on, kiddos. We have Lauren Conrad from our digital communications department here. Lauren, raise your hand so everybody can see who you are. Lauren takes really good professional pictures for us and those will all be available both on our town's Facebook page and on Flickr. And so, you're welcome to go there and grab the photos. You're also welcome, obviously, to take your own. And when your child comes up, this is the general area. We just don't want you to stand right in front of Lauren. That's the main goal there. Okay, thanks. And Vice Mayor will assist us in reading the names.
Thank you, Mayor. I will do my best to get your names correct. And if I don't, please let us know. Thatcher Damar from Bridges Elementary. Victoria Penez from Burke Elementary. Oh, there she is. Reina Schreier from Centennial Elementary. Erin Barnhart from Christ Greenville Lutheran. No Erin? No Erin? Veronica Martin from Coronado Elementary. Julie Guthrie from Edgewood Price School. Noah Wentworth from Edgewood Price School. Skylar Phillips Weisaki from Gateway Point. Skylar was our helper. Leah Hernandez from Gilbert L. Did we see her on Leadership Day? Yes. Caleb Johnson from Highland Park L. Ethan Taylor from Higley Traditional Academy. Smile. Come on, Ethan. Just a little smile, Ethan. Amelia Vollmer from Houston L. That's a good stranger.
All right, thank you, Group One. Group Two is the rest of our elementary school students. So, come on down. We also know that it's a school night and there's lots of demand. So, if your child has already gotten their award and you need to leave, we totally get it. So, feel free. And we'll do a quick transition here and then do Group Two. Are we good?
Okay, Eva Romero from Leading Edge Academy. Callan Mendoza from Mesquite Elementary. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Mary Kate Peterson, Neely Traditional Academy. Kiara Myers from Oak Tree L. Presley Stillman from Patterson L. Wyatt Arnold from Pioneer L. Leilani Torres from Playa del Rey. Cameron Dugan from Power Ranch L. No Cameron? Cameron Dugan? No? Moving on. Bryn Halverson from Quartz Hill L. Kara Schmidt from Riggs L. I know, look at, yeah. Mayor has her big girl shoes on. Clara Miller from Santana L. Cody Cano from Settlers Point L. Nicholas Hamarker from Sonoma Ranch L. Lizzie Hirsch from Spectrum L. Kasia Dente from Town Meadows. It's Casia Dente. The last name I had, Casia, for the L. I know, it does. My Boston accent doesn't do us justice.
All right, Group Three is all of our junior high and high school students. They've been waiting for this moment, I'm sure of it.
They're the least enthusiastic. Right. Senior Award Nights are tonight, yes. Kaylee Thompson from Campo Verde High School. Autumn Gossett from Canyon Valley. Miriam Sturgeon from Cooley Middle. Oh. Oh, excellent. Ainsley Snyder from Gilbert Classical Academy. Get up there, Dad. Sabrina Warley from Higley High. No Sabrina? No Sabrina? No Sabrina, okay. Mark Stromback from Leading Edge Early College. He was nominated by a whole team, the junior high team. Jordan Walling from Mesquite High. Did I get that wrong, Jordan? Hunter Fenn from Mesquite Junior.
I have number two because it's Gilbert Leadership. I think you have start. I think so.
Mackenzie Gibson from Mesquite Junior. Mackenzie Gibson from Mesquite Junior. Paige Nolan from Payne Junior. Carly Sabin from Payne Junior. Macy Muir from South Valley Junior. And Mayor, since we don't want Councilmember Cook to feel left out, Saturday was Councilmember Cook's birthday. Was it Saturday or Sunday? He said Saturday, right? Saturday was, yes. Okay, later. Well, he's got an audience now, so I thought I would share that. Nick Steer from South Valley Junior High. If he's really 40, I'll do a cartwheel.
That does conclude our Student Citizen of the Month portion of our meeting, and we will start the business section of our meeting in about two minutes. Thank you.
...flourish in business and houses and families and we enjoy it. So, we give you thanks for that tonight and we pray and ask that it would continue. And I ask this in the name of your son and our Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you Pastor Henry. At this time, the clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Member Bridget Peterson. Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
A Coram is present.
We'll turn the time right now over to Vice Mayor Peterson to assist us with a recognition of the Gilbert Leadership Class 26.
Thank you Mayor. It gives me great privilege to be able to recognize this class because in my volunteer life, I happened to serve as Chair of the Board of Directors for Gilbert Leadership. I'd like to ask the members of Class 26 to come down and join me, please. This is about not even a third of their class. They have 24 in their class this year and we are recognizing them because each year Gilbert Leadership does a project to give back to the community to leave their legacy in the town of Gilbert. This class chose to create two exchange zones at our North and South Police Stations so that people who are selling goods, buying goods, or exchanging children for custody situations have a nice place to go that has tables, it's well lit, it's under camera observation at all times. And we wanted to recognize them for the service that they provided to our residents of the town of Gilbert. They had to raise all of the funds themselves, they had to do all of the work themselves, and they do earn points for that as part of their class program. But I'd like to give them each an opportunity just to introduce themselves and where they work.
I'm Jonathan Reese with Geneva Financial.
I'm Eric Gray with Leading Edge Academy.
I'm Callan Escoto from HG South, home of the Gilbert Historical Museum.
I'm David Baldwin with Via Circuits.
Kristin Drew, the Town of Gilbert.
Mike Burkhardt from Gilbert Fire Department.
Would anybody like to say a couple of words about your class project? Oh, I guess I, Captain Burkhardt.
I just wanted to say thank you again for all the support that we had from the town. Nicole Washington, one of our classmates, unable to be here this evening, she's the one that kind of came up with the idea and then we all jumped on it and all took different parts of it. So, I think it's a cool thing that's going to go down in perpetuity, I think. I think that's a thing that can go on for many generations to come, so thank you.
When they were in the process of trying to pick their class project, they actually had a class member who had a relative that was selling an iPhone and thought they had chosen a very secure location to go and make that exchange and was robbed. So, that pushed them to look at this even harder and then they went to our police chief and talked it over with him. And Chief Solberg was at the ribbon cutting for the North location here, right across the street at the Public Safety Building. Lauren, can we get a picture with me with the group, please? Thank you. Can I have a big round of applause for this class, please? Thanks for being here, you guys. Thank you. You have one month left in your class and you have to see me on your last learning day, so get ready.
It's evident they're a hard-working group, but I did get to go to the ribbon cutting of their, one of their two locations and they're also a really fun group who have a good time, so we're grateful for their contributions. At this time, it is communications from citizens. Do we have any requests to speak under communications from citizens?
Yes, I do. No, I don't, sorry. This one is for the same case that we have other requests for.
Okay, seeing no desires from the citizens to have three minutes with the town, we will move to our consent calendar and I look to our Vice Mayor to assist.
Thank you Mayor. I will try and get it all straight. We had several addendums. Our consent agenda, I have had no request to pull anything off of our consent calendar this evening, so I would like to just go ahead and move that we approve item 3, 4, 5, A, B, and C, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote, thank you. That does move us to our public hearing items and I'm looking to our council, are there any requests to speak on any of our public hearing items?
Yes Mayor, I have several requests to speak on item number 15. I have one card, Al Schleep. Did you wish to speak or not wish to speak?
No.
No? Okay, thank you.
Any requests from council members to speak on any of the agenda items besides 15? 14? Okay, so from council, I have 14 and 15. All right, I will open the public hearing on items 12, 13, 16, 17, and 17A. I will close the public hearing on those agenda items and entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote, thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 14. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 14. Which council members? Councilmember Cook?
Is Kelly here?
Of course she is.
Of course she's here. Now, this particular agenda item is, in a way, closely associated from a conversation we had at our last council meeting related to the levy discussion. Is that correct, Kelly?
Mayor, Councilmember Cook, there is an association here. What the action item is before you tonight is how much debt do we want to have due? How much payment do we want to make in fiscal 19? It does not tie us into a specific levy or rate, although usually they would be correlated. The levy or rate would be set at the June 7th meeting.
Thank you. So, I know that in the levy discussion, we had talked about going to the 23 million number, I think it was 23, 25, I think, or 35, and that would set the levy about $1 million more than what our minimum debt services would be, is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Cook, yes, that's correct.
And if the council on the June 7th were to, let's say the majority were to vote for that number, can you share how this number is related to that vote for June 7th?
Certainly. The, if council wanted to have a rate that's the same as last year, the dollar 3, then that would allow us $1 million to pay down additional debt. And so, the action tonight would be the $1 million of additional debt. If council wanted to pay only what our regularly scheduled payments are, the 22.3 million, that would be closer to a 99 cent levy. And if council wanted to do the same levy last year, or this year that there, same levy in fiscal 19 that there is in fiscal 18, how about that? That would be not enough to pay our debt service. We would be about $650,000 short, but it would result in a rate of about 96 cents.
Okay, so if, again, I'm just sharing this, is if this gets approved tonight and on June 7th, hypothetically, let's say I were to motion that we do the 22 million levy, which will put the rate at 99 cents, where does the $1 million come from? Because that obviously would not be from what we were presented last time, but what would be some of your options for that $1 million if we were to vote for the rate to be about 22.3?
Mayor, Councilmember Cook, if we were to have, to pass tonight to do the $1 million of additional debt service, then we would need to make payments of the 23.25 million. We would, and if we had the rate set to only receive 22.3 million, there would be that $1 million gap. We would need to come up with that money from another source. My first recommendation would be to use the most restricted money, which would be the fund balance in our debt service account. It's the most restricted and it is only for this purpose. It would bring us below the 5% minimum fund balance that's been set by council.
And I think I'm going to look to my council members to my left, Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Taylor. I know that you had talked about a $650,000 number. If we did the million, does that meet your thinking? I know it's a little higher than the $650,000 you talked about, but does that work for you? If you get the million from the restricted fund?
So, I don't have my numbers with me, so I don't know what that does to the average property tax payer, so I'm not really sure. But certainly, that would be preferable to the higher amount. So, any compromise in that direction is much appreciated. I guess that's the best I can say for the moment. Just wanted to clarify a couple of things before you sit down, Kelly. And Councilman Cook already addressed this fairly well, but I just want a couple of questions. How much is callable now?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, the total amount that's callable is 17 million.
Okay, so, just to clarify then, why the 1 million instead of the 17?
The 1 million was a target to help keep the rate as similar as possible for our taxpayers, so matching the rate from fiscal 18.
Okay, so, it's, the goal then is to keep the rate at 1.03. That gives you a delta between the debt service and what we would collect from the levy of $1 million, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. How much is budgeted to be spent in CIP contingency?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, every year we budget $100 million in CIP contingency to take advantage of opportunities that may arise.
But what are the funds identified to meet that budget?
Whenever we use that contingency source, we have to match it with the actual revenue source, so it doesn't have a direct one-to-one correlation on paper. When we use it, we say where that money actually comes from.
So, would there be any way, if tonight we pass this identifying CIP contingency, and we don't, and we don't raise the levy for that $1 million delta, wouldn't we be having to draw from some minimum balance somewhere or take from some other budget item to meet that $1 million?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, what would happen is the contingency allows there to be additional expenditure in the debt service fund, but there would be a shorter amount of revenue coming in, so by default, it would be using fund balance in that fund.
All right, so, I just want to make it clear that if we're, if the majority of the council is set on raising the levy again this year, so as to shoot for that 1.03, then it makes perfect sense to adopt the item as written, because CIP contingency doesn't really have any dollars behind it yet, but you can't, you're in a position where you can't identify the tax levy as your funding source yet because we haven't voted on it. So, there's no way you can do that. So, it makes sense to use another item that doesn't have dollars to it yet because later you're going to address that. Now, if you decide not to raise the levy though, you're in a harder position. So, I guess what I'm suggesting is, I would suggest we identify our funding source tonight as something other than the property tax levy, or, which isn't identified, but other than CIP contingency, because there are no dollars there, if our intent is to not raise the levy. So, I know there's going to be a motion made, but I just wanted to explain that, you know, you don't have to raise taxes to pay down debt. Much better is to reduce spending, or in this case, and I'm going to actually go for the general fund capital projects, because there's always millions upon millions left over each year in that. So, better in this case to just recognize that there's spending that's not really going to happen and put that money to good use. So, that's going to be my motion to amend or whatever, whoever gets to vote for, or move first, but.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? This is the second time we've had some sort of conversation about this, this, in the last two meetings, so I have, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, thank you. Yeah, well, Councilmember Peterson, I appreciate you bringing up really the two options here. We can use an increased levy to pay down debt, but you can also reduce some of the expenditures you have in certain projects. And we know that happens already with some of the CIP, given the examples in the past where we think we're going to spend upwards of $6 million and we really only spend, you know, $200,000 or $300,000 for that particular year. So, I think we already know that we're going to be coming in and if not, we know we can budget. In fact, you've identified a funding source in the past, you know, equivalent to this amount, Councilmember Peterson, so appreciate that. So, we know that we can do that. So, it's really the decision, do we want to control the spending and pay for it that way? Because we can, even with the reduced tax rate over the last couple of years, we have been able to pay down some debt. So, it's not really a false dichotomy that we might think it is. So, anyways, I'm more on the control of the spending, cost containment approach and continue to pay down debt that way. Mayor, thank you for the time.
Absolutely. Councilmember Cook.
So, back to Councilmember Peterson's recommendation. The restricted fund that Kelly mentioned of the $1 million, I mean, I'm not saying it's all in one big pot or big bucket, but I guess my question is, does that meet what you're thinking of, based upon what she said is the most restrictive out of all the buckets that we have?
You know, it's a challenging question, because you're in a position now of having to ignore one policy or another. So, you can either ignore your policy of minimum fund balance and do as you're saying and then honor the policy of using your restricted funds first, or not. You can go the other way, but you can't honor them both at the same time. And so, I just tend to think that based on our leftovers every year of capital projects, which you've pointed out very consistently year after year, that I'm quite certain there will be plenty of leftover and more to cover what we're working on. So, to me, that makes more sense. But if we get to the property tax levy debate and it goes the other way, I mean, if we want to go from that restrictive fund balance and ignore that fund policy, I still think that that's better than raising the levy. So, we'll see how that turns out, but that's the reasoning behind mine. It's kind of a challenging situation, policy-wise, anyway.
I have three goals. One is fiscal responsibility, which I think you can tell from this council about the actions that we take and also the manner with which we conduct ourselves as it relates to the budget is very clear. This entire council believes in fiscal responsibility and we vote that way and we act that way and we make decisions that way. My second goal is always to adhere to our financial policies because that is where we know we are in a safe zone. That's, those policies have been vetted, they're intentional and they provide a framework for us. And then the third thing that is very, very important to me is transparency as it relates to our budget, so that any citizen can know and understand exactly what we're spending, why we're spending it, and also what the outcome of that spend is. And so, those three things are very important to me and we accomplish all three of those things by sticking to the recommendation that the staff has made. So, that's my goal and intention, is to stick to that. That's been a fully vetted process. I know that we've discussed a few different numbers here, but that is the only way that I have seen where we can adhere to all three of what I would consider to be council goals. So, with that, I would welcome a, I will close the public hearing on this agenda item and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve item 14, but amended to identify the general fund capital projects as a source, meaning reducing the budgeted amount in that fund by $1 million and reallocating that to the debt service fund.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. That motion passes with a 5-2 vote, thank you. We will now open the public hearing on Agenda Item 15. I know we have quite a bit of members of our public that are wanting to either speak or have their name read into the record tonight, so I think what we'll do if it's okay with the team is Nathan will give a brief presentation, we'll then do those public hearing requests to speak and then proceed from there.
Thank you Mayor. Oh, thank you Mayor Daniels, council members. This is AP 1801. It's an appeal to the denial of a use permit to allow multifamily use in a regional commercial zoning district in the City Gate Development, City Gate Apartments. So, the subject site is 10 acres located south of the southeast corner of Higley and Baseline Roads, identified here on this aerial. The City Gate Development is that area outlined in green and then the red outline is the 10 acres of these City Gate Apartments. I would also note, this graphic kind of demonstrates an area of the baseline medical growth corridor or growth area that is intended to, encompasses all of baseline in Gilbert except the apartments here, as well as this subject, this entire area of the subject site east of Higley Road all the way down to Houston. The intent of that is hopefully provide and encourage a mixture of uses to kind of help supplement the hospital and MD Anderson and those surrounding uses. This is an enlargement of City Gate as a whole and you can see the subject site as well as the surrounding residential communities access, existing access points, Michelle Way, San Benito, Higley Road. So, all of that infrastructure is in and as you can see here, and honestly, this is one of the few remaining pieces within the City Gate Development that either haven't been approved, entitled through design review, or under construction. The appeal, or the, yeah, the appeal is of the use permit, a little context, there was a use permit applied for concurrent with a design review application for the City Gate Apartments. That was heard at the planning commission, that's always heard at the planning commission. They saw it as a study session, then they saw it as a hearing item in April, which they denied based on the feeling of it did not comply with the findings of fact to demonstrate an integrated mixed-use development. April 9th, the applicant appealed that denial and now that's before you deny it as the appeal, AP 1801. So, that is the request, an appeal of their denial by the applicant to allow the multifamily use in regional commercial. This graphic is a good one to kind of paint the picture of what exists, what was, what is proposed, approved, and existing on the site. You can see the details of the City Gate Apartments, which we can talk about more, it's 10 acres, 249 units, just under 25 units an acre, four four-story buildings up to 55 feet in height, and you can see the surrounding items here. Fries Development, 123 square feet, as well as a number of commercial pads, up to 40,000 square feet of those, those were approved. Applicant can talk more about the timing of that. I'm hearing construction in 2019, but he can speak to that a bit more. You have the approved and being constructed hotels, there's two here, there's a three and a four-story, totaling, I think around, I have about 200 beds. So, those are fairly intense four and three-story buildings. And then, City Gate Storage is located just south of those and those will be here, heard by the designer board next month. That's a three-story building. The Savannah House is a concrete living facility or senior living facility, which some may know it as. That is a two-story building, about 100,000 square feet. And then we have the Copper Springs Senior Living to the south that exists, that's a three-story, about 175,000 square foot building. This is an enlargement, this is the site plan for the use permit. It's again four buildings, you can see here located on the perimeter of the site primarily, and they're, again, trying, their main access is off of Michelle Way, which is existing, and they're trying to activate this from commercial, their adjacency to the commercial development to the north or future commercial development to the north in the Fries. This is the pedestrian connectivity plan that kind of demonstrates where pedestrian nodes would be located and do exist today. These graphics are of existing infrastructure on San Benito, the benches and the refuse cans, as well as where the pedestrian nodes and connections to the buildings would be located with the City Gate Apartments. This is the wall plan that was provided with the use permit that demonstrates where walls would be. Walls, parking screen walls are required, but they wanted to keep transparency and visibility open, so this just shows where those visibility walls would be located. So, I'll try and briefly touch on what a use permit is. There's four findings of fact for all use permits, any use permit that comes into the town, there are many uses that require them and there's four findings of fact laid out here. Staff believes that this request does meet that, the goals and policies of the general plan, the requirements of the land development code, as well as it's integrated within the City Gate Development. There's also four additional findings of fact required for a multifamily use in a regional commercial zoning district, you're all very familiar with that. You recently approved the design guidelines that provide a little bit extra detail, criteria for evaluating such requests. These are mixed use, land uses, sustainability through compact design, pedestrian scale and orientation, and transportation and connectivity. So, in those design guidelines, which I provided more detail in your report, they provide more criteria of how to evaluate that. I bring this back just to kind of demonstrate finding number one, mixture of land uses. This can be done either vertically, so multiple uses on the 10-acre site, which would be obviously retail below and loft above, although I would note loft above is actually permitted by right in all zoning districts, so, or all commercial districts. So, if that was what they're proposing, we really wouldn't need a use permit. It also can be, a mixture of uses can be provided through horizontal integration, meaning adjacent uses. So, with City Gate Development being, this being the last remaining parcel within the development or that hasn't received approval, obviously Fries is not constructed yet, you can kind of see where they're going with trying to activate Michelle Way and integrate the uses like the commercial to the north. Sustainability through compact design, so what does that mean? That is things like compact form, reducing the footprint of buildings as much as possible, reducing vehicular trips. They have a number of amenities on site, they are trying to, again, activate Michelle Way. This is kind of an image that shows, I can't, my pointer's not there, there it is, that shows what the Michelle Way streetscape would look like, direct connections from the internal building, their internal doors into your units, so this is not your typical apartment complex where doors are external and then you walk out. This is, everything's internal and they want to provide things like connections to the street, direct connections to the street, activation of Michelle Way and storefront windows and those types of things to kind of reduce the footprint, put as much compact design as they can on the site, and hopefully provide things like amenities and being adjacent to commercial that they can reduce vehicular trips and such. So, that's really what that means. This is a graphic that kind of shows some of their amenities. They have internal bicycle racks and trash compaction, valet trash, those types of things that they want to create that, foster that live, work, play environment. So, that's how they try to address that finding. Third one, pedestrian scale and orientation, that's obviously pedestrian nodes, getting people out onto the street, connecting to the commercial to the north or surrounding adjacent mixture of uses. So, that's how they tried to attempt to comply with that. And then the final one, transportation and connectivity. This is obviously things like, again, reducing vehicular trips to the site, pedestrian walkways, pedestrian nodes. Again, what they're wanting to do is try the best they can to integrate with the surrounding uses and primarily the use that they're trying to eventually coordinate with is the commercial and retail to the north through these pedestrian nodes and such. So, obviously, there are some citizen concerns, you've received letters of opposition, they'll be able to get into their concerns a lot more than I can, but apart, you know, they don't, again, they don't feel that this is an integrated mixed-use development plan. I think there's still concerns with traffic and the actual use and whether it's well buffered from their surrounding residential communities and such. Staff is supportive of the use permit. It is within the City Gate Development, it's a final piece, there's existing non-residential uses within there, these are all non-residential uses, whether they're hotels, storage, concrete living facilities, these are all non-residential uses that are permitted by right only in our most dense commercial districts. So, that being said, we think it's well-integrated horizontally, not vertically, of course, and it orients the buildings to the street, trying to get people to activate to the north as well as stay on-site and reduce vehicular trips. And with that, I would say, we want to recommend approval of the use permit, or I mean, the appeal, and which would overturn the denial of UP 171045. So, sorry I made that a little long, but take any questions.
Thank you Nathan. Any questions for Nathan? Councilmember Anderson.
Just one question Nathan, could you discuss a little bit more detail about mixed use? Could you discuss a little bit more detail about mixed-use? There are some pretty classic definitions of mixed-use. What is your understanding of what mixed-use means?
Well, Councilmember Anderson, so, it's a good question and it can mean a multiple, multitude of things. It's vertical, like I said, that's primarily not going to happen in the suburban environment as we see even in dense areas like the Chandler Mall and such. Those are all parceled out, uses next to each other. Areas of vertical development are primarily in downtown areas. So, what we're left with is a horizontal, horizontal integration, meaning uses adjacent to each other. So, that's how staff is viewing a mixture of uses. So, and again, I would point out, these are all commercial uses. Obviously, the fries is a key component of that evaluation. They're trying to activate Michelle Way and in event when that gets constructed so that folks can live in, live in these units and, you know, enhance pedestrian connections across the entrance in, to the north, those types of things. They're trying to activate the areas that they feel pedestrians will most likely want to interact with. So, that's what I view it as, is in this situation, it's, it has to be a horizontal integration, so.
Don't miss, most of the accepted definitions always refer to a compact urban form. Isn't that pretty much what we're looking for?
That's correct. And that would apply to, you could look at that in a number of ways. You could look at that as compact urban form of this site itself, meaning we do think they comply with that. They're reducing their footprint. They've gone in terms of designed a vertical, more urban form of architecture, trying to, you know, not create a typical apartment complex, maybe like you see out beside us. They, they want to reduce the footprint, try and keep things on-site, but you could also look at it in terms of reducing the footprint, reducing vehicular trips, those types of things for surrounding uses. Say you want to go to the gym, or your pool, or walk to a restaurant, or something like that, that's, you could apply that to the City Gate Development as a whole, where they're trying to design this so that folks don't have to get in a car, go to somewhere else. They could stay within the City Gate Development as a whole.
In general, then, it's an efficient use of land is what it is?
It, it is. I would define it as that, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, thank you. If I understand correct, there's a signal on Michelle Way versus, can I get my eyeballs in here?
Councilmember Taylor, that, that's, I don't think it's, it's not constructed yet, but it is in the plans.
Anticipated?
Yes. I would have to ask our engineer when the timing of that might be, but.
Why, why does it make sense from the town's perspective to have it on Michelle Way versus Gary?
The entrance off Michelle versus Gary?
Right, for the signal.
Oh, I would let our engineer speak upon that maybe a little bit more, but I believe it was due to the, the full motion of, of this here, this intersection of Michelle Way. Oh, you want to talk? Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, thank you. Michelle Way, the reason the location for the signal would be at Michelle Way is because of the intensity of the use that is created by the fries of those commercial development there that, that would use Michelle Way to access Higley headed southbound.
Mayor, if I may, so, is it anticipated for fries, Michelle Way will be one or the primary entrance and exit for the fries development?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, Michelle Way would not be the primary entrance or ingress or egress point for the fries. The fries has a number of other ingress and egress locations that it has available to it. Michelle Way would be the way for traffic to access headed out of that commercial area to go southbound. So, to get across all the traffic on Higley Road, a signalized intersection would be necessary to be able to, for them to be able to do that safely.
Thank you.
David, don't go anywhere. I think you usually hold on to details like this. How many feet is it from Houston to Michelle? I'm testing you, but not really.
Oh, my goodness, Mayor, I am so.
Is it more than the stand, like, it's, it's beyond what we would consider to be the minimum standard? Because Houston and Higley is one of my least favorite. I feel like I stop there every single time. So, I heard an amen over here.
We're going to make, Madam Mayor, we're going to make a note of that and make sure we look at the timing for Higley at Houston to try to get that corrected as, as quickly as we can. The distance there is more appropriate. It's about the one-quarter or the halfway point between Houston, Michelle is about the halfway point, not exactly. There had been the desire to put two signals on Higley in addition. We felt that that would be too many signals here and Michelle Way was the most appropriate place to do it, to be able to help traffic move safely and to help Higley continue to move as efficiently as possible.
I would just urge us to continue to look at traffic counts before we actually require the installation of that light. I realize that this is an intense, Higley is an intense main artery, but I also feel like the more lights we have, the more inefficient our system can be. And so, I just, you and I have talked about this lots of times, so I don't have to keep going.
Yes, thank you.
And Councilmember Ray would like to chime in because I think that's where the amen came from.
It may have came from me. David, we have a lot of people who are here who live right around here. Can you also explain, it's a little bit off-topic, but not too far, some of the improvements that are happening at Baseline and Higley as part of the CIP project coming up? I'm sure the, those who go through there every day and are tired of waiting to turn left going north would love to hear how you're going to fix that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Ray. Higley Road and Baseline is a challenging intersection right now. The number of turning movements that occur there is, is more than what it really has the capacity to handle during its peak and it's going to be getting worse as more of this land does develop. So, we are going to be increasing the turn capacity on Higley Road and on Baseline Road. We're adding a second left-hand turn lane for all four legs of that intersection and that's going to give us a significant improvement in being able to move the vehicles that want to turn there. The queuing lengths, we don't have enough time to let those longer queues get through. With two lanes for making that left-turn movement, they'll have, you'll be able to get more vehicles through each, each phase of that intersection.
And, and construction starts later this year on that project, correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Ray, yes, we are. In fact, today you were approving some of the right-of-way that's needed to make that project happen. We hope to bring to you as soon as possible the construction contract for that project.
And, and one last question on this. Do you have an estimated timeframe as to once construction starts there to when it ends? And please be guessed longer if you need to, because we will hear from some of these great residents if it doesn't, if it goes longer than we say tonight. So, please add an extra month on to whatever you're thinking.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Ray, that duration is one that we're programming nine months for the construction of that and hopefully they'll be able to do it sooner, but it is one that because of the traffic demands that exist there, it's going to have to be done in parts and pieces and to keep people moving through there as efficiently as we can during construction, which is always a difficult situation.
I'm just going to add that actually our CIP team, we've been looking at timing from start-to-finish projects. I see some of our, Susanna back there, too. They have been remarkably on time and so I, he didn't have to add a month.
They're excellent. I just want to make sure because we, we will hear, rightfully so, we will, we will hear if, if we don't hit our timeframes.
Absolutely. Any more questions from council for staff? Okay, we will move to our communications from citizens.
Mayor, I have several people that do not wish to speak, so I'm just going to list them. Al Schleep, Kerry Schleep, Fonteague, Connie Roberts, Harlan Eli, Jessica Hatch, Crawford, Jared Christensen, Nick Hammer, Sandy Thigpin, excuse me, they're stuck together, Robert Thigpin, Brad Sager, Len Greer, Julie Greer, Darren Sparks, Russell Croats, Vicky Kingsford, and Troy Kingsford. And then, we have six people that would like to speak.
Thank you. Is it acceptable to the council if we do two minutes per citizen? 12 minutes total? Okay, thank you.
The first slip I have is for Stephen Biggs. Stephen, if you could come on down and give us your name and city of residence, please. And then, next up will be Terry DeJong.
And just to clarify, Vice Mayor, the ones that you've already read into the record, do not wish to speak but are all opposed to the project, is that correct?
They are all opposed.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, council members. My name is Stephen Biggs.
There's some lights there, Stephen. They won't start yet. Maybe reset its time since I just interrupted them. Thanks. The green light means you're all good. Yellow light means you have 30 seconds left and red light means that your time is up.
Perfect.
Thank you.
My name is Stephen Biggs. I live in the Cameron Ranch community, which is directly east of the City Gate Apartments. It's a 291 home complex. You, you all received a letter from me. I hope you had the opportunity to read it because I'm going to be concise and obviously not cover all the points. I tried to be more detailed there, but I think this vote is very important to the town council because it gives you the opportunity to begin to define for Gilbert what mixed-use means when it's multifamily and regional commercial. Recently, this council adopted some guidelines to help define or, or assist the council and the planning commission in determining when that is met. And this case, I think if you approve this, it sets a dangerous precedent to widen that to basically allowing any multifamily use in any regional commercial district just because it has pedestrian access points, because that's all that this complex does to attempt to horizontally integrate with the existing uses. I respectfully disagree with what Senior Planner Nathan Williams said about there being only commercial uses currently. According to Article 2.9 of Chapter 1 of the LDC, the congregate care facility, as well as the senior living center are considered residential uses under, under the way the zoning guidelines are. They are not commercial uses. They are residential uses. Right now, we have primarily residential here and the residential that is there does integrate itself within that area. There's the medical and there's senior living centers that work well with the medical we have there. The hotels work well with that because it serves the needs of those people. This apartment complex does not integrate well. It simply has pedestrian access points and that's it. And that's not sufficient. Thank you.
Can I have Terry DeJong, please? And then, next up will be Marsha Pressberry.
Hello, thank you. I am Terry DeJong. I live at 1327 North Balboa and that is directly across the street from, on Higley. The last meeting that we were at, I got really angry because I was told that our subdivision was going to have plenty of buffer space and the buffer space available is Higley Road. That's it. Savannah House, that is at the far end of the lot, is a two-story building. I went through it with my father. I had my fiance walk into the backyard so I could see if people can see into our yard and I can see him walking around. So, a two-story completely across the lot, they can see eight inches into our bedroom window, they can see into our patio door, and I'm just talking from my own experience and how I feel about it, I'm going to have four stories of people looking into my house. And that bothers me that I have to live with my bedroom window shut, my patio door is closed, my father does his physical therapy in our pool, and we are inviting everybody into that. When we bought this house four years ago, the signs that were there said, "Medical, Dental, Retail." That's what it said the use was for. It said nothing about four stories of people living on top of us. My father was a dairy farmer in a small town in Colorado. We moved to Gilbert. We chose Gilbert because of that, because of the agricultural and rural history. When the wind blows a certain direction, we still get that smell of home. We chose Gilbert because it has this sense of community and that's, that's what I was raised with, that's what my father knows. And I just think this is wrong. This is wrong to have this building in this community. Thank you.
Marsha Pressberry, and then, we'll have Sean Irwin. Sean Irwin. Just give us your name and community of residence, please. And then, we'll have Trey Lynn.
Thank you. Sean Irwin, Copper Springs, 3303 East Gary Way. Shorten this as much as I can. I want to speak directly into, to Article 5403(c). One states, "The proposed use will not be detrimental to health, safety, or general welfare persons living or working in the vicinity, to adjacent property to the neighborhood or to the public in general." Thomas D. Stuckey, Ph.D., Associate Professor of Criminal Justice at Purdue University, actually did a study on this. He used geocoded uniform crime report data, along with information on 30 categories of land use and demographic information from the U.S. Census in order to map relationships between land use and crime. The conclusions were that crime is directly correlated to residential land use as being a key factor in the promotion of crime, with generally higher rates in areas of high-density residential development where mixed with commercial property, as this is. The author summarized the data by saying, "There seems to be something about high-density residential units that is associated with all types of serious violent crime, even controlling for other factors in the model." Now, I'm certain for every study presented that signifies a correlation between higher-density population or multifamily units and crime, the applicant could present one that counters these findings. But it's not the onus of the opposition to this application to show that safety or general welfare in the neighborhood will be negatively impacted, but rather, it is the responsibility of the applicant to prove to this council that their intended use will not impact the safety or general welfare of the neighborhood. Now, unless they have a crystal ball, the best they could possibly do is say that it may or may not impact. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Trey Lynn, and then, Susan Hines.
Mayor Daniels, members of the council, I'm actually here on behalf of my community, the Viabella community, and many of my neighbors have agreed to cede their time to me, so I'd request an additional six minutes to cover some of the concerns that they have, if that's possible.
Would it be okay if we give you six minutes total? Because we didn't, I'm not sure which requests to speak were theirs.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
As, as I stated, my wife and I live in the Viabella community. We're a community of 20 homes located directly to the south of this proposed development. And these apartments would go basically in our, our backyard. We have many concerns about it. First of all, we want to make clear, we're not here to oppose a property owner doing something with their property that they have a right to do. There is no, they're not allowed to put these apartments here as a matter of right. It's the developer here seeking to do something different with this property than the zoning currently allows. And we are simply asking that, that the town council deny that permit on those grounds. The developer hasn't met the conditions for the conditional use permit. Primarily, the apartment complex is not a mixed-use facility. And for some of the reasons that Mr. Biggs brought up, this is really a standalone apartment complex. What they're doing is they are placing it near a grocery store and a shopping center and trying to tie that in as mixed-use. And I don't think that the ordinance was ever intended to allow that type of usage for mixed-use. There's really no integration here. And allowing this to go in would set this dangerous precedent where a developer could really put apartments on any resident, or any regional commercial zone property, so long as there are some other commercial properties nearby, such as a grocery store. They haven't shown that, that this really is this integrated use that the standards call for. So, on that ground alone, we'd ask that the permit be denied. Additionally, the staff has stated that this is part of a compact design. I, I really don't see anything compact about this apartment complex. It's 250 units, it's four buildings that are 55 feet high. This is a very large-scale, very dense apartment complex. And again, it's located right next to community, or single-family homes. One of the reasons that I live in Gilbert, the reasons my neighbors live in Gilbert is because we're concerned about a place that's family-friendly, that's safe. We do not want to live in an urban environment. I work in Phoenix and I drive there every day from Gilbert, simply because I don't want to live in a place that has these types of buildings all over the place. And I, I can say that the people who have signed our petition that we've submitted, nearly 100 residents who unanimously oppose this project, everybody I've talked to has opposed it for the same reasons. And that is because they, they live in Gilbert because they like the family atmosphere. reasons. And that is because they live in Gilbert because they like the family atmosphere. They do not want it to be urban. They do not want this type of high-density development in the area. And we believe the apartment complex will really have a negative effect on the overall area. Some of the things that were mentioned are the potential for crime that this could cause. When you're bringing this many people into this small area, I know the developer thinks they will get a very high quality of renter in these apartments, but we're very concerned about five, 10 years down the road, when maybe they're not getting the quality of renters that they want. And it has the potential to increase crime. We've already seen a lot of crime spill over from South Mesa, where you have a lot of this type of development. And everybody that I have talked to is concerned about the potential for crime. Also, the potential for noise. Again, you have a lot of people in a very small area. You have a rooftop deck, you have a dog park, and this is located directly next to single-family homes. I share the concerns with some people who have talked about these being able to look in their backyards, because this would look directly into my backyard. And my wife and I, we have five small children. We want to be outside without these people in these apartments seeing directly in our backyard. We also have concerns about our property values. We do believe that this will reduce our property values, and the evidence of that, and the question that I asked the Planning Commission, and then I would also pose to the Town Council, is if you were in our position, would you want this going in your backyard? Would you want this directly next to your single-family home that you just built or just purchased? And I think everybody on the Planning Commission unanimously agreed that they wouldn't want that. They posed the same question to Mr. Ray, the attorney for the developer, and it was the same type of response, where I don't think any of us would want this going in, especially given the fact that this isn't allowed as a matter of right. This is something that they are attempting to change. Everybody that I have spoken with, and my wife and I have spoken to many neighbors, many people who live in the area, everybody unanimously opposes this. And I think that goes directly to the question of whether this adversely impacts the health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding area. I think the best place that you can look to answer that question of whether this will have an adverse effect is to the people who actually live there. And that is us. And many of these people have shown up tonight. Others have signed letters or petitions. And we are all in agreement that this is something we do not believe is in the best interest of the community. We do think it will have an adverse effect on our health, our safety, and our welfare. And we would ask that the Town Council affirm the unanimous decision from the Planning Commission, and deny the request for the conditional use permit. Thank you.
Can we have Susan Hines, please?
Hi. My name is Susan Hines. I'm in Carroll Ray Ranch area. And I just came across this particular development that was happening.
Susan, would you mind getting a little closer to the mic? Thank you.
I came across this development just recently. And I'm opposing of it. And the reason why is that I moved here from LA 15 years ago. I've seen an increase in Gilbert that is unimaginable, because I'm originally from Tempe. I grew up in Tempe. I had friends in Gilbert when I was younger. So anyways, what I'm seeing here, you guys are turning into this mini LA. There's so many people coming here. I mean, I have young kids that are going to be driving soon. I have young kids that, you know, can't go out and play. There's crime in our neighborhood almost weekly, going up and down our streets. I see accidents enormously. Every intersection, I'm seeing accidents, and bad ones. And I work in a hospital, too. So I would like to oppose this. I don't think it's the right mix in there. Why can't you do something with the elderly? I was thinking, why don't you do a generic type of a hospital for the elderly? A generic hospital of some type, you know? Because people need therapy, things of that sort. It is zoned for medical. The hospital's there. There's medical buildings. I mean, why do we need to have something like this? I mean, four stories high, and then you put Savannah in? It's two stories and three stories? I mean, are you going to populate, you know, the sky? I mean, what are you doing? I just feel like this is turning into LA. And this is a great town. I mean, I remember when it was fields. We moved in here, it was cornfields. So I would oppose to it, just for the well-being of my children.
Thank you. Are there any more requests? No, Mayor, that's all. Thank you. At this time, we will invite the applicant to the podium.
Mayor, members of the council, permit me, if you will, to load a presentation. I just pulled it out. Hopefully, that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
I probably got it upside down. There we go. here on behalf of the applicant, BV City Gate. One, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I will try to be brief in my comments. And with this, and I will take direction from the council on how they would like me to go, as it relates to next. I appreciate the opportunity to listen to the neighbors. We obviously had a lot of neighbors, a lot of these same neighbors were at the Planning Commission hearing. Had the opportunity to meet with two of them afterwards, Stephen Biggs and Trey Lynn, to discuss those concerns, and appreciative of their willingness to listen to what we had to say. And so I don't know if this council would like me to address some of those concerns, or make a brief presentation, and then get into some of the concerns that I heard and try to respond those. I will defer to this council on how they would like me to proceed.
Counsel, we're hearing "Address the Concerns."
Okay. Happy to do that. As Nate and staff indicated, this is not a rezoning case. This is a use permit. Multifamily residential is permitted, a permitted use within the regional commercial zoning district. The classification for that is that it's got to be integrated mixed use, and I must get a CUP. But it is a permitted use. And so we're not talking about rezoning tonight. We're talking about whether or not the use permit findings have been met, and whether the four additional findings have been satisfied. One of the things that I heard kind of touched on the impact of multifamily in the regional commercial zoning district. And I think as you look in this site, and in particular, if we hone in a little bit closer on the site, this is the classic definition of mixed use. As staff indicated, it is horizontal mixed use. It is not vertical. But it is a mix of non-commercial uses in a setting. The City Gate development, when approved by the Design Review Board, back when that body existed, did approve a set of landscape design guidelines, street themes, and monument signage. And this development, the proposed City Gate, complies with that. I can tell you, having worked, having had the pleasure of working in this town for the past 12 years, that I've had lots of discussions with staff over the years about multifamily in regional commercial. And I can tell you that for the handful of developments that do make it here to be presented to the commission and to the council, that there are another 20 or so that lay on the floor, because staff knows the high standard and high bar that this council has set, and the expectation of if multifamily is to be developed in regional commercial, what that looks like. Additionally, as has been touched on, the recently enacted design guidelines are a great indicator on how that integration can occur. When we started working with staff, and we've worked closely with them about 10 months ago, when we started even before filing an application, one of the first things that staff handed to us was a draft set of the design guidelines. And they informed us that, hey, these are the draft design guidelines for the additional findings required. We don't know what the final form is going to look like, but we know that they're going to be approved in some fashion. And so we have worked tirelessly to satisfy that criteria, recognizing that this would be one of the first cases, use permit cases, that would be brought before the town in a public hearing, where we're talking about multifamily and regional commercial. And so we worked closely with staff to come up with that and to satisfy it. So I know that the neighbors might not have an appreciation, and some of you all might not understand, I know some better than others, the concept of multifamily and regional commercial. One of the other comments that I heard dealt with regional commercial, and kind of what is it and what it's intended to be, because we've heard the comment that, you know, 55 feet in height, and this type of intensity, why would you locate that near a residential community? Well, as indicated on this slide, the general plan designates this area and the area north of baseline as regional commercial. And I've highlighted from the definition of regional commercial exactly what is permitted. It is a broad range of high-intensity uses, mixed-use development, accommodate high-density residential, where it's closely integrated with retail, and a compact development containing urban amenities. And that is right from the town's general plan, where that definition takes place. And so it is the most intense of the town's commercial zoning districts. By right, whether it's this development, or an office development, or a medical development, or another type of retail commercial that's permitted within the RC, by right, you can have up to 55 feet. By right, the setbacks are what they are. We have not requested any deviation from the setbacks in the regional commercial. So you could have an office building shoved up against the street, four stories. And so this type of development is the type that is contemplated by the general plan. One of the things that we also heard kind of dealt with, you know, the area and how people want to live, and how, you know, it's great that there's a hotel there, because that can support the medical office, or the medical uses to the north. Same thing with the assisted living and the senior living. But as you look at it, and as Nate indicated, this site is part of the baseline medical growth area, and is specifically called out as that. And the medical growth, and the baseline medical, if you look in the general plan, talks about medical and office and other amenities to support it. There are the goals and policies from the general plan that clearly support what we're trying to do here, as it relates to this growth area. Specifically, Policy 4.4, in the middle of that slide, states, "High-density housing is encouraged near large employment centers and/or transportation corridors, and we're to provide a mix of land uses, including varying housing types and densities." This type of a housing development does not exist within the town. So the question is, where are the people that are going to work in this employment center, this area that the town has identified as being one of the key growth areas? Certainly, there are, as we heard, multifamily housing opportunities in the city of Mesa. But last time I checked, we're in the town of Gilbert. And in terms of the housing opportunities up here, for people that will want to work in these type of areas, none of that exists. Your general plan clearly identifies that, as well as the zoning. And so we believe that this development represents a small piece on an overall larger patchwork quilt of what mixed use is, of what the regional commercial is, and specifically giving opportunities for those people working up there, another opportunity to live in close proximity, satisfying and further supporting what we're requesting. There were two other things that I heard related to, one was crime, and then was buffering. No one wants to have a development that's going to be a haven for crime. As part of the design process, and I can appreciate the design is not before the council tonight on the use permit, that is a separate issue that will go to the Design Review Board. But in terms of, and for the residents' benefit and for this council's benefit, there's a number of criteria that are looked at when multifamily developments, such as this one, come online. The first is a nationwide recognition of what's called SEPTED, or Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And that's where various agencies have looked at design, and how to better design these types of communities to ensure the safety of not only the residents, but the people in the area, through having open areas, lights, and things like that. And so this, when we looked at this, it ran through that, and it meets the SEPTED criteria. In addition, there's the SEPTEM criteria, which is the Crime Prevention Through Management. And that is, all the managers, all the people working on and site, they go through background checks. Any renters that come on the site go through a rigorous background check process. There are provisions in the lease that will allow us to kick out any bad person that meets various criteria. We can kick them out in less than 24 hours. And so there are those mechanisms in place to ensure that this is as crime-free as we can get it. Certainly, you look at the surrounding area, and a lot of the things that we've heard from the residents, in terms of what attracted them to live here, we believe will be the same attraction for these residents here. The last thing that I heard kind of dealt with where we are in terms of buffering and support. I'm stuck. I promise I didn't. And we took a look at that, because unlike some of the assertions that have been made, we don't believe we're in anyone's backyard. If you look on this line of sight drawing, which is to the area to the south, between our building and the closest building out along Higley Road... Was working earlier, sorry. Is over a football field length away, 311 feet. And if you drive by the site, you'll see a lot of trees there. Those trees are recently planted. We believe this kind of represents the kind of the distance and the separation and buffering, so that at the end, what you have relative is our site, and you have a large three-story building that is providing a great separation and buffering from the residential community to the south, the existing one. And so we have good distance there. When you look across Higley Road, this is what this line of sight represents. And it is, you know, 2/3 of a football field length away, in terms of the distance, recognizing that these homes back up to a major arterial street, that has been evidenced by some of the comments, the comments by the mayor and Councilman Ray, is a highly trafficked road. And we know of that. So there is buffering, there is separation, there is existing landscaping on the other side of the road that provides that additional buffering within an HOA tract. So as we look at things, and kind of run through everything, again, those were at least my list of items that I looked. But again, as we kind of look at this site, we believe that it does satisfy the criteria. We believe that there is support in the general plan for this, and it specifically encourages the type of development that we're proposing. We agree and concur wholeheartedly with staff that the use permit findings have been met, the four initial findings, and then the four additional findings. As I mentioned, we work closely with them to ensure that we could meet those. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have, but we would request this body's approval of the use permit, which would mean an overturn of the Planning Commission's decision. the planning commission's decision. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brennan. Councilmember Peterson.
Brennan, can you address the properties to the west? There are some mature trees there, and I've looked at the Google Maps. It's pretty mature, and there's, I'd say, pretty good privacy created by those. But there are a few gaps. Can you address how, you know, the commitment that you're willing to make publicly, or the applicant's willing to make publicly, in addressing some of those gaps? If, of course, the property owners have to, you know, cooperate and, you know, be interested in it, but can you address that?
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilman Peterson, I actually had the opportunity, I've been by the site, had the opportunity to drive by there this afternoon, and you are correct, there is a good amount of landscaping that does exist, but there are some gaps. As I understand it, there's about a 40-foot HOA tract that abuts the right-of-way along Higley. We have not had any discussions with the HOA that owns that track, but are more than happy to sit down with them and talk to them about providing replacement trees for some of those areas where it appears that trees have died and have not been replaced. Happy to do that and meet and sit with them. Obviously, if they are willing to allow us to provide that, you know, enhancement or replacement for the screening, we're more than happy to do that.
I just want to make sure we have a clear commitment to make every good faith legal effort to address those privacy issues through landscaping that you would offer if there's cooperation and interest on the other side.
Through the mayor, Councilman Peterson, yes.
Brennan, I want to compare the discussion that was had, the study session back in February, and then eventually leading up to the regular session of the planning commission in April. In February, this is almost verbatim from the minutes of the planning commission, it was stated, "We agree that this type of use and the existing development does achieve mixed use. The density and the compact look are exactly what we're looking for in the RC district." And then in the April regular session of the planning commission, "This is not mixed use, there's no integration." What happened between those two meetings? What changed that would cause that?
Through the mayor, Councilman Anderson, I don't know. I can tell you that from our side, when we went to the study session, this, the plan that's up on the screen now, is the plan that we presented at that study session. Some of the feedback that we received at that, and I too recall those words that were said at the study session, some of the feedback that we received dealt with more design-related issues, as I would call them, in terms of architecture, in terms of the type of perimeter fencing that we would have, maybe enhancing, in particular, you know, the pedestrian connection, again focusing all that to the north. In terms of the plans that were presented to the commission at the study session, and the plans that were presented at the regular hearing in March, or, excuse me, April, there was no change. We did not make any changes to, again, with the exception of the design, we did not make any changes to what we were presenting. And I would defer to the commission as to why that change took place.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, Brennan, appreciate it. At this time, we bring the conversation back to the council for decision-making. It is almost 8:30, so thank you, everyone, for sticking with us. We know it's a late night for all of you as well. And we will start. Is it okay if I start to my right? Councilmember Cook?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you all know, that I have been a real strong advocate of keeping every commercial property commercial. And I'm not going to change my view on that. And let me just share some thoughts. So we have a very large employer just north of that intersection with our MD Anderson and our Banner Baywood folks, excuse me, Gateway, sorry about that. And, you know, those are both nonprofit businesses, and we're not making any money on those nonprofit businesses. I mean, even though they're a large employer there, but I think about the revenue generation component of that particular corridor, which is a very important corridor from our economic development team. And we've been a strong advocate of making sure that we grow and nurture as many businesses in those commercial spaces. So I look at those pads as well, that supporting our medical industry and the different supplemental medical organizations that could fill those pads instead of having them residential. So it's really easy and real clean and clear for me that I'm going to stick to trying to hold on to as much commercial in Gilbert as much as possible. And it's very simple for me to say that, so I'm not going to be in support of this particular agenda item.
Councilmember Ray.
It's fun, and I guess a little nerve-wracking, to see so many friends and neighbors who are here tonight. I live extremely close to this. If I was a better golfer, I'd be a one wood away. And I appreciate you guys coming down tonight. I know many of you are missing Peter Pan at Carroll Ray Elementary. I got to go to the 1 o'clock showing to watch my daughter and that, but I missed the one tonight. And it was the talk, this was the talk of Peter Pan today, was this agenda item. But I do appreciate you guys coming down and expressing your thoughts and concerns, and emails, and phone calls, and knocks on my door. And I also appreciate the applicant. I appreciate Barclay Group for their willingness to want to come to Gilbert. And this is not their only project that they're either doing or hoping to do in Gilbert. And I say thank you to Brennan. He has spent more time in the last two weeks with me than probably the last two years combined on this topic, and we've talked a lot about it. I like the project. I think it's a good project. I like the developer. I like what I'm hearing about it. But I don't think that this is the right location at the right time. And so for those, I'm going to stay with keeping this, not approving this project. I hope that either this same project or something similar continues in Gilbert and looks at some other locations that might make sense, but I just don't think this is the right place at the right time for this project.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. I'm skipping over the vice mayor, and we will continue down to Councilmember Peterson.
So first of all, I want to compliment the residents. There have been some really impressively articulate and cogent arguments that have been made, and I really appreciate them. Many of them really directly to, I think, the issue at hand. The way that I apply my thoughts to this is the way I do pretty much everything, and I do it based on property rights. And the comment was made that this wasn't a use by right. Legally, I don't think that's correct, based on the two attorneys I talked to before this meeting and my own understanding and experience. It is a use by right as long as the conditions are met. So really, the question before us is to determine if the conditions have been met. And the fact of the matter is, there's enough subjectivity in there that different people are going to come to different conclusions. As I've measured the facts against those conditions, I feel that it does meet the conditions. The one that I was wanting to close the loop on was the privacy or the ability to use and enjoy your property. That's a really important one, I think, to everyone. And so I wanted to make sure there's a firm commitment that that will be honored and protected as much as possible. But I think it's important also, and so I am going to be supporting, but I want to provide one other bit of context that we have to always consider. When we look at any new development, there's always reasons to be concerned about the impact it might have. One thing I'll say about this, though, is we're talking about regional commercial as the zoning. And there, just about any truly commercial use is going to have more of an impact to a residential neighborhood than this will. Residential and residential are two very compatible uses because they're the same use. This is a little more intense residential, but it's not by nature incompatible with other residential. And so, you know, we could turn this down. I hear comments about other things we'd like to see that go there. Well, you know what? If it's truly high-intensity commercial, it's going to be more of an impact as far as noise, privacy, traffic, all of those things are going to be worse. And so I think we need to keep that context and that perspective. So at any rate, Mayor, with those thoughts, I do support the item. I am sensitive to the neighbors and their concerns. I think that we're, at the end of the day, we're going to mitigate basically all the significant impacts to the use and enjoyment of their property. That's my opinion, and I understand others will have a different opinion, but thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I tend to agree that the underlying zoning here is going to remain RC, regional commercial. I'd have a lot more issue with this item if we were changing the zoning to multifamily. That would be an issue. But I agree with Councilmember Peterson, this, I tend to feel that this is a use by right, as long as the criteria are met. And I have to agree that there are good arguments made on both sides about whether or not the criteria have been met. I feel like we, as a council, our responsibility is to set the general policies for the town and to let the market react to the direction that we give through the general plan, which is our general policy. The general plan, Mr. Ray had referred to it somewhat, but I think it's beneficial to continue reading what it says about this particular area. The general plan actually encourages, it highly encourages, the use of vertical development overlay zoning as a district to achieve, as a vehicle, to achieve maximum density. And indeed, in this particular area, in the medical growth area, it talks about a height of up to 90 feet, six stories mid-rise, and it talks about compact development. And that's why I asked the question at the beginning about what is mixed use, and I think compact development, which this does meet that criteria, is referred to in the general plan. I think most of the issues that came out that I heard tonight with the neighbors can be addressed through design, and I would expect this to go back to design review and that the applicant pay attention to the comments being made tonight, specifically some of the things Councilmember Peterson was talking about. And I know there are other issues that could address some of the concerns of the neighbors through good design, and I hope they will listen to those concerns and see if there are ways to address those with design as it goes back to our design review board. I'll be supporting this tonight mainly because I want to support the general plan, the plan, the policies that are set by the general plan. Thank you.
Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, thank you. You know, these are the hard cases where there's just lots of good people on both sides of the issues. And I tend to agree with Councilmember Peterson and Anderson in terms of the legal aspects being satisfied, so I don't want to restate that. I do want to just express where I think the principles that are germane in this case here, which is property rights, right? We touched on that, right? Whose property right is superior, neighbor A or neighbor B, right? It's usually what these come down to. I believe that both are equal, right? They both have property rights, and if they're doing things within the law, and as Councilmember Anderson just stated, then they should be able to move forward. And to secure these rights, governments were instituted among men, right? That's why we exist, is to secure those rights. And I think that they're acting within their rights, so I'm prepared to support the item tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, thank you. I had just asked for you to pass me on purpose because I had had the opportunity to sit through the planning commission's study session and their hearing on this, and had lots of discussion with them about MF and RC. And I was part of that stakeholders group for part of the time also, and I see where they were coming from. And quite honestly, Councilmember Anderson just said that he could argue this either way, and I've had the same conversation with the applicant, that I could argue this case either way. I can see from both sides, like Councilmember Taylor just said too, is that we have property rights, we have great neighbors, we have a situation of if the commercial was already there, I think it would be a different discussion that we'd be having tonight. I think that we're looking at, do we preserve that commercial for something different? MF and RC isn't allowed, right? They just have to come to us for certain criteria to be met. And I have felt all along, since I first saw this, that the criteria was met and that our staff brought us a topic and a situation where they could support this in this location with the three-story buildings behind them, the four-story hotel, the uses that are adjacent, and the integration that they're trying to build with the shopping center. We've seen across the street from here in Gilbert Town Square that the commercial was not successful without multifamily, and we've chosen to put multifamily in there since then because of that. And so for those reasons, I would support this this evening.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Peterson. And I'll throw my two cents in, although all of us can count, so it probably isn't totally necessary, but at this point, I'd still like to state my opinion on this project. Contested zoning cases and conditional use permits are my least favorite of anything that comes before us, because no matter what we do, somebody is very unhappy with us when they leave. And I, from a leader in the community, my goal is always to find common ground and to find the compromise that helps with both, and in these cases, that's not possible. So at this point, I think it's safe to say that I take each of these cases on an individual basis, looking at both the merits of the case and the surrounding property uses. And so I am not in favor of this particular zoning case. I have in the past voted for, or conditional use permit case, I have in the past voted for both a rezone and conditional use permits when I see the merits of the case and have supported those. But in this case, the Frye Shopping Center will not fail if there's not a multifamily project immediately south to that. They have, I'm sure, already looked at traffic counts, already examined the fact that we're going to be needing to expand that entire intersection in order to accommodate both them and the surrounding uses. Traffic counts are going to be the number-one predictor of success on that site with the Frye's Grocery Store, so I'm not concerned about that piece of it. I do also see and can sense a need for additional uses in that area that are not multifamily. We've talked about providing employment housing, but what we are finding is that with the wide variety of housing that Gilbert does offer currently, there is not a shortage or opportunity for people to live, work, and play in Gilbert. And we've worked very hard, both as a council and as staff, to ensure that. So at this point, I think I've made my statement clear, and I will entertain, I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 15, and we will entertain a motion. Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, I move to overturn the planning commission's denial of UP 171045 and make the findings a fact for the City Gate Apartments, a conditional use permit to allow multifamily residential use in the regional commercial zoning district on approximately 10 acres of real property generally located at the southeast corner of Higley Road and Michelle Way, and zoned regional commercial with a planned area development overlay subject to the conditions. One, the project shall be in substantial conformance with the site plan and the details shown on the exhibits provided under Attachments Number 3, Number 4, and Number 5. And two, decorative pavement shall be provided and extended across Michelle Way at the primary point of ingress egress to the City Gate Apartments as demonstrated on the site plan, Sheet A 1.1.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 4-3 vote. Thank you, and thank you to the residents who participated tonight. That moves us to the items and Agenda Item 18. This is a revisit, I guess, from a previous code amendment, and I think it's probably safe to move forward fairly quickly on this agenda item. Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, I'm going to save a little time. I do want to show really quickly a picture, just so that we have a little context. If staff can grab this and put it on the overhead, that'd be great. I'll be very brief.
Thank you, Valerie. Although the overhead projector is put away, so I'm not actually sure we'll be able to do that.
Why'd they do that?
Why'd they do that to me?
It's okay.
Okay. Well, I'm going to tell you what that picture was, although I was so excited to show you.
Are they putting it up?
It's okay, I'm all dressed up, no place to go on this item tonight anyway because turns out we're going to have to refer this to the Planning Commission to actually fully analyze it. Our code actually requires that we do because it's a change to the zoning. Let me just clarify. The zoning code and the land development code are the same code, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, that being the case, our code specifically tells us we have to, any changes we make to the zoning code have to go through the Planning Commission. And this particular change related to the height, oh, it's upside down, the height of the accessory structures was never contemplated as a part of the other changes. So, we'd actually have to take it back to them. Anyway, I just wanted to show this, and yes, I removed all personally identifying information or companies, no references. I was very careful. But I wanted to show you the absolute smallest we've built, not to name companies, but we've built lots of accessory structures over the years. And I pulled up the shortest one I could find. And if you zoom in, just the front elevation's fine. You don't need to see all of it. This is the most basic one. You can see it's very basic. Go ahead and zoom in there. You'll see that the building height, that top number there is 15 point, it's 15 foot six or something like that. My point is, if you're talking about accessory structures, one that's actually going to be useful as an accessory structure, the code specifying six foot is really just not useful. So, my suggestion is that we direct the Planning Commission to analyze, conduct a hearing, and make a recommendation considering raising that height. I would say 15 feet. If we can only get 10, I don't know it's going to be acceptable to the public and other input, but I'd like for that to be analyzed because I think we can do a little more and still have a reasonable-sized structure that's not too imposing.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Peterson. I don't have any issues with that. If we, I don't think you even either motioned to do that. I think we can send this back to council, I mean, to Planning Commission.
Do we need an official motion? Would you like me to, uh, legal?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, the code provides that the council can direct staff, make a recommendation to staff, to take that to the Planning Commission.
Done. Sound good? All right. That's sufficient. Thank you.
Happy birthday to me.
Yeah. That's your 40th birthday present.
Well, I'm grateful. Thank you.
You bet. We've all spent a birthday or two, I think, as a council on, oh, okay, so you're safe. That moves us to Agenda Item 21A, and that's our parks naming project. So, we'll ask Rod Buchanan to give us a brief presentation. Valerie, thanks for your help.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm happy to present this item tonight. We did an extensive outreach on the two new parks that were currently in design and about to go into a groundbreaking effort. We had about 250 or so submissions. They are in your packet. The Parks Board did meet and gave you three suggestions. I just want to point out to council that you are not required to choose any of the names that were submitted. I'd like you to think of them as maybe ideas and concepts for the final name. You can choose one of the names that was presented from the community. You can choose your own name, and you can modify one of the names. And so, I just wanted to point that out before you go through your process. And Mayor, I'd like to turn it back to you.
Thank you. Rod and I had a little conversation about this today because I wasn't super thrilled with some of the options that we had. So, as a council, I'd like us to brainstorm just a little bit from the dais. I'm not sure we're going to come to an actual conclusion today, but we can engage the public as well if we determine that we can narrow it down a little bit. We can engage the public through our social media channels. I know there's a desire to announce the name of the groundbreaking, but I also think it's really important to get the name right before we make an announcement. So, we have a little bit of a process ahead of us. I think we can brainstorm. I think you have, Peterson Park sounds really nice, but I'm not sure that that would be appropriate. I know that this is...
Even if you tried to twist my arm, I would not allow that to happen, trust me. I'll just make one comment, and I'll be quiet. I'm not, I don't have a strong opinion about Rittenhouse. I think we could talk about that one. I will say I do like Gilbert Regional, and I'll say why. Because this is a massive park, and I do think it's a good idea, if we're going to build a park that big, for people to be forced to talk about Gilbert's name when they say the name of the park. So, I will say I do like that. It's very basic and straightforward. Maybe it's not all that flowery and exciting, but I do think it does its job in regards to recognizes where that amenity is and draws positive attention to our community. So, that's my one opinion. I'm pretty much done. So, you know, I'm right out of the gate with stuff, so I'll be quiet.
Love it. It might be your birthday present, but we'll wait and see what the rest of the town council has to say. I did a little brainstorming today with some good, really amazing town team members, so I will throw a couple of things out. And here's the joking one. I know it's not going to be named South Park. That was a joke. I never meant it. I just want to make sure that's really clear. I even kind of joked today about Paciencia Park, which means patience in Spanish, because the people in South Gilbert have had to wait a long time to have a park nearby. However, I love the idea of keeping Gilbert in the name, and we are coming up on our centennial. So, Gilbert Centennial Park was something that I absolutely thought of because about the time this park opens will be about the time that we are celebrating our centennial. On our Rittenhouse Park, Rittenhouse to me is a street name that is very predominant in Queen Creek, so I don't want to keep it Rittenhouse because that's not really Gilbert. But it is adjacent to Power Road, and it is more geared towards sports. So, I did have some thoughts with some other people that we name it Power Sports Park. It's also very close to the potential public safety training facility, and there's some synergy there with the power and the park piece of it. So, there was also a late minute, last-minute ad. I don't see any member of their team here, to name the regional park Timberlake Park.
What?
And before you think further, it's going to have a lake, and there will be a ropes course, and those are two very unique things. So, I'm just putting it out there. It was a late ad, but definitely there was a team behind the thought.
Was that Gilbert Digital?
I am not, I will not divulge.
That was a quick scratch.
Okay, well.
You can just delete it.
Councilmember Taylor. This is a brainstorming session. We know how this works. Okay?
Mayor, thank you. I tend to agree with your initial comments on, let's throw some ideas out, no real deadline to, totally on board on there. Let me just throw out categories that I think help us identify with some of the great things in our country. People, ideals, and values. So, Washington, Lincoln, or Jefferson, great icons of our country. I do like the Gilbert aspect in there. I don't know how we'd work it in, but something like that. I mean, I like Patriots Park down in Phoenix. You know, that's a fun place. You can identify it. It has values, American values. Ideals, Constitution or Independence Park, potentially, either one. I mean, those are big ideas that we all value, that are nonpartisan. I mean, it just cuts across all of our residents. Or particular values such as Liberty Park or Freedom Park or something in that genre. I mean, ideals and values that we all hold to. Maybe those are worked in there somewhere. Just tossing that out for the list.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor.
Think about maybe some landforms or something down in the area. Certainly, the Santan Mountains are there, Santan Vista Park, something like that. Sanoki Wash is on the south border. You could do something with Sanoki in there also, so.
Yep. Anybody else? Are they laughing?
Are they laughing?
Uh-oh.
At Rod trying to spell.
We're going to make everybody, uh-oh. So, Rod and I talked about his typing skills before this, too.
Isn't there a Q?
I offered to go down and type for him, but he rejected my offer.
You and Sanoki.
Come on, that's not fair.
Mayor, Chris and I had come up with a compromise, the Banger Pain Park.
Banger or pain?
Banger Pain.
Okay. Banger Pain.
Is that why?
And now we know. Councilmember Ray.
A couple of thoughts. I do like having Gilbert in the name of the regional park. As far as a Rittenhouse, I don't love the power name because to me, Power Road sounds more like Mesa than Gilbert. It's always, that's the edge.
It's also our main border, but...
Yeah. But I do like the idea of having something with first responders, assuming that a public safety training center goes in next door. I think that those two will always be linked, especially as they hear sirens and things like that around there. And so, I would like to have something associated with first responders, but I don't love Power Road. I like the power idea, but I don't love Power Road.
You better start loving it. That's one of our borders.
I love everything west of Power Road.
Just out to the median. All right, good.
I should let others speak. I'm sorry, but you already called on me, so. First of all, you're brave for being the first to start brainstorming because it's hard. But you're right, we need to brainstorm. No, I didn't brainstorm. You did, and you did a good job. I actually really like, and I think we're all agreeing on, well, I hope we get Gilbert in the name of the regional, but let me just say for the Rittenhouse, just listening to Councilmember Ray, what if we had something like Gilbert Heroes Park?
American Heroes Way.
Is that too close? Gilbert Responders Park. I don't know. I like Gilbert everywhere, just saying.
Yeah, Mayor, let me just toss out another word that's, Gateway, the Gateway Airport, that would be for Rittenhouse specifically. I don't think it's appropriate for the regional, but that's a big brand. Maybe we build off, maybe there's some synergy.
I was just afraid that was going to link us, link it more to Mesa because Phoenix, Mesa, Gateway Airport, the Gateway. Our Gateway corridor is actually north, and so, not there. Whoever suggested Mountain View Park, you offended like two-thirds of the town of Gilbert because they're rivals to Mountain View, not to mention the fact we have two Toros on our council, but we were going to ignore that piece and not let them have a vote on those. Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. For the regional park, I've always liked the word Gilbert. I like the word south only because it identifies the location. So, I've always, I think, in all the, you know, the times, always called it Gilbert South Regional Park. So, to me, that's been in my mind. The other thing I thought about through this process was that this park sits in the Santan Character Area. And I've tried to figure out many ways of using Santan Regional Park without actually stealing it from Maricopa County's Santan Regional Mountain Park, and I'm not sure how to get that to integrate, but it is part of our Santan Character Area. The other one that we haven't really talked about is Acatil Road goes through there, which splits the park in half. And I don't mind having the word Acatil in there as well as part of the park. If we go down to the Rittenhouse basin, it's going to be a major sports park. So, anything related to having the word sports, I like. I do like the idea because it's going to be next to the public training facility. Well, again, we're assuming that's going to happen. But the one word that I have been thinking a lot about is what's directly to the east, and it was the Williams Air Force Base or Williams Airfield. The Gateway has really taken away that name, and that has been part of a history in the region of the Williamsfield Airfield. So, I almost liked the idea of even calling it Williams Airfield Park, only because it's just adjacent to history that's going to be gone because of the Gateway naming has gotten rid of anything related to Williamsfield. And I know we've kept Williamsfield name, you know, north of that, but again, I just share that, to me, that the Williams Airfield Park might be an option.
Thank you.
Or Willie Park, I mean, it could be, you know? But anyways, again, I just think of the history.
Mayor, thank you. Sanoki is Q-U-I at the end.
Yeah.
I knew it had a Q, so I had to look it up. Yeah, that's right. If you can't spell it, you can't name it that. I really, and I know it's not fancy or clever or anything, but I really just keep going back to Gilbert Regional Park for the larger park because of the fact that we want to bring people in from all over. And I think regional expresses that. I think it needs to have the name Gilbert in it, like we've been saying. I don't think that you can add Gilbert Santan Regional Park. I think it gets too long and too cumbersome, and people just won't call it that. They'll still call it Gilbert Regional Park. I can't see calling it Gilbert South Regional Park because nobody will care about the south except us, really, and maybe the people that live down in the south part of Gilbert. As far as Rittenhouse goes, I'm still, I'm still not sure. I'm not sold on the Power Sports. I don't know that I want to name it Williams Airfield Park because to me, that just says it's a place where there's airplanes, not that it's close to a place that there's airplanes. So, I think it gives people the wrong indication. Oh, and there's a Centennial Park in Chandler, by the way. I looked that up.
I know. It's not Gilbert Centennial.
True. It's not Gilbert Centennial. So, I'm still, the brainstorming's good. I wasn't sold on anything. I was surprised at all of the references to Senator McCain that we got. That was quite a lot more than I ever expected.
Councilmember Peterson just confided that he actually agrees with me on a couple of things, which is awesome.
Her creativity is so much better.
I had help. I can't take credit for all of it. Lots of good people. All right, so we really haven't narrowed this down. In fact, we've expanded it. But what we have done is we've moved away from the recommendations that were in our packet. I think we all kind of, there was a couple that I think didn't make the list that were pretty clever, but for good reason, they didn't make the list. So, we have an opportunity now, but I actually think it might require more work from us as a council because we do want to get this right. These are things that don't usually change once they're established. So, let's continue this item. I apologize to our Parks Team who I know would like to make an announcement on May 29th that does appear that we will not be able to do that, and I apologize on that end. But let's do a little bit more work on this.
Mayor, can I just ask a follow-up question? I think I'm not understanding where we are with Elliott District Park. Are we, are we going to be talking about that as well, and should we fold it into this discussion?
That's an executive session tonight. That's an executive session item.
Okay. Well, we'll talk about that, but I guess I'm just putting out, do we want to put it in the context of this? And we can deal with that in another topic.
You mean, you want, you would like to rename it? Is that what you're talking about? Because that's all we're doing right now is talking about names.
Yeah.
Okay.
Possibly. If we do, perhaps just put it in this larger discussion.
Okay. All right. Well, let's move forward in this way. Council, we are going to give ourselves to the next council meeting to come back and be solidly on one name or another, and then we will be able to move forward. But we're going to give ourselves a couple of weeks to mull these over, and I will invite residents who would like to communicate with the council via social media or email if they have other suggestions. We would be open to those as well. Sound good?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Seems like a really big decision. Can't we just name it like fire stations, like number one, number two, number three? There was some genius in that. All right, that moves us to, I believe, Agenda Item 19. We're going to go backwards here to our boards, commissions, and committee reports. Seeing none, report from town manager on current events.
Mayor, members of the council, nothing tonight.
Any report from council on current events?
Mayor, I'll just give a shout-out to the class of 2018. Be safe out there. We want to see all your wonderful pictures and be safe after graduations. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I have no additional report on current events. Is there a motion to recess our regular meeting and reconvene an executive session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you to the council, and thank you to town staff and the public who participated Councilmember Cook, and there should be one.
For Victor. Oh, cool. Thank you.
For our actual birthday boy today, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.